Yes.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the December fifteenth meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order in twenty-nine twenty. The public may only view the meeting online and not in the council chambers. The first item on the agenda is roll call. Ms. Chow, would you call the role, please?
I'll mute myself, I know. I just saw that. I knew you were gonna call me on that. Chairman Rossler.
Here.
Vice Chair Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Here.
Commissioner Grimm.
Here.
Commissioner Hastings.
Here.
Commissioner Looney.
Here.
Commissioner Aguilera.
Here.
All present.
Very good. Next item on the agenda, commissioners, is approval of the minutes from our December first meeting. If there are no changes to the minutes, can we hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Looney's motion to approve. Commissioner Garrettson.
I second that motion.
Alright, it's been approved and moved and seconded to approve the minutes from December first meeting. Ms. Chow, would you call the role, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rossler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kramer.
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilera.
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm.
Here, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
No problem. Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Good, thank you very much. Ms. Chow, the next item is agenda changes. Any changes to our agenda tonight?
No changes tonight. Chairman Rossler.
Alright. We'll move on to oral communications. This is time that the commission sets aside for matters that are not on our agenda. Ms. Chow, do we have anyone wishing to speak under oral communications tonight?
I see Danielle is listed here as an attendee. I'm not sure if you're here for oral communications or you're here for one of the two items on the agenda tonight, the Housing Element or the Alcove Project. If you could please raise your hand or unmute yourself and let us know, please, if you have an oral communications item.
I do not. I am from the Legale Society and I got an invite to listen in on the meeting today.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. Hearing no one, we will move on to our public hearings. The first public hearing is the Alcove at Palo Vista. And Mr. Winters, I believe the staff report is yours.
Thank you Chairman Rossler and commissioners. I'll go ahead and go through the presentation here. This is a request for approval of a site development plan tentative subdivision map and condominium housing permit to construct five residential condominiums at one eighty-two and one eighty-four Palo Vista Drive. File number P nineteen zero zero eight six. Next slide, please. Chris? Yeah, we can go to the next slide, please. Are you not? Oh, I'm sorry. I got you. This is the project scope. It's, the site is located west of Civic Center Drive and east of Palo Vista. The site is currently developed with two dwelling units that were constructed in the nineteen fifties. The current proposal is for a three-story project that would be split into two buildings. The five units would consist of three two-bedroom units, two three-bedroom units, and these would range from fourteen hundred forty-one to seventeen hundred forty-four square feet. Each unit features two and a half baths, tuck-under garages and carports, seventy-square-foot decks on the second floor of each unit, and balconies on the third floor ranging from approximately one hundred twenty-five to one hundred fifty square feet. The site will have approximately eleven hundred square feet of landscaping, which is at the frontage, and about nine hundred square feet of that is at the rear of the site, where there's also an outdoor seating area. Next slide. This slide shows the project location and adjacent land uses. It's located right behind or north of commercial site, which is the Mission Plaza. It's surrounded otherwise by residential uses, except for across Civic Center Drive where there's a gas station. The surrounding residential uses have varying number of units on each property, ranging from duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and so on. Next slide, please. The slide shows a general plan, which has designated the site as mixed use, which allows up to forty dwelling units an acre. The zoning is consistent. Under the downtown Vista specific plan, it is in the Paseo Santa Fe district, which limits the density of forty dwelling units an acre. Maximum height for structures, forty-five feet. Next slide. This close-up shows the project site, the existing units at the front and rear of the property and in an ancillary building in the middle that I believe is a garage. It also shows the adjacent properties. That's Palo Vista Drive to the left or on the west side. Next slide, please. This is the view of the site, looking east from Palo Vista Drive. And the commercial property, obviously, to the north, which would be on the right. The project site frontage is currently, has some portions of paving, but basically undeveloped as far as having a sidewalk to connect with the sidewalk that's existing to the commercial property. Next slide, please. Some of the project details, it's a one-quarter acre site approximately. So with five units, it comes out to a proposed twenty-one dwelling units an acre. Vehicle and pedestrian access will be provided from Palo Vista Drive. The frontage would include ten feet of landscaping. Rear yard area would be fully landscaped with a fire pit and seating amenity. Residential parking for the site, it does require thirteen spaces, and thirteen spaces have been provided in the plan. Regarding open space, the code requires two hundred square feet per unit. The project provides seventy square feet, as I mentioned, on the decks on the second floor, as well as the additional balcony space on the third floor. And in addition to all of that is a common open space in the rear yard area, which is approximately one hundred and fifty square feet. Next slide, please. This slide shows the site and first floor plan with the drive access coming from the Palo Vista Drive, which would be on the left of the slide. The driveway area is shaded. There are basically parking on the first floor of the units. Two of the units have a two-car enclosed garage. Three of the units have a single-car garage and a tuck-under carport. There is one guest parking space between the buildings, which is shaded there, and two additional guest parking spaces at the east end near the landscaping area. Next slide, please. This slide shows a second floor plan, which is the living space, dining and kitchen areas, and access to the third floor and the seventy-square-foot decks. Next slide, please. Third floor plan shows the bedrooms for each unit and the two bathrooms. Next slide, please. This slide shows the project's architecture, frontage and rear view, which is the north and south elevations. Basically, there's a variety of materials that have been provided, and there's a slide included that shows some of the callouts there. Next slide, please. This is showing the site elevations to the east and the west, as well as the shaded end to show the adjacent structures and relative height. Next slide, please. Some of the materials includes the steel garage doors and the decorative design. The Corten steel sheets for part of the siding material, along with the lap siding and the stucco areas. Next slide, please. The project was reviewed at early design review approximately two years ago. Some of the comments covered were that vehicular access to guest parking needed to be verified, that there was adequate turning radius. The applicant did provide a turning exhibit that was included with the project plans. There was a concern to have some walkway differentiation from the main driveway through the site. The applicant, I mean, the architect did confirm the concrete walkway will be provided with an integral color and texture, so there will be a color infused into the concrete, so it has a different appearance from the drive aisle. Unit four, as designed, there was a concern that it could function as a bedroom that might affect the parking. The den does not have window for light or egress. And inclusion of the den, even if it was counted in the parking count, it would not re-change the, it would change the required parking in that it would need twelve-point-two-seven-five spaces. Instead of twelve-point-two-five spaces, either way, it's rounded up to a thirteen parking space requirement, so it doesn't change the parking required for the project overall. The commission also discussed with the applicant a need for a common amenity for the residents in the rear yard area. Since then, the plan has been revised to show a landscaped fire pit area with concrete seating and so on around that fire pit. Next slide, please. This slide was actually left over, and I wanted to include it to show the perspective angles from the early design review. There might be a few minor architectural changes, but I basically wanted to include this to show the perspective shots with the adjacent building. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation, since the project is consistent with the allowable density under the general plan, the project complies with the city's development standards, and the project is exempt from environmental review as an infill development project, which is a categorical exemption. Staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the site development plan tentative map and condominium housing permit for the five residential units on parcel one seven-nine, one-two-two, twenty-four. That concludes staff's presentation. We do have the project architect Kyron Brimmer available, as well as the engineer Joel Waymeyer and the property owners.
Do they have a presentation?
They do not have a formal presentation.
Okay, very good. We will move on then to commissioners' questions. Commissioner Kramer, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, I just have one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is, currently, the power lines are all above ground. Will they be undergrounded, or does that not make any sense because the rest of the streets have them, you know, above ground?
There is typically an undergrounding requirement that is included in the conditions of approval. I can verify that in the conditions and respond in that. I would just need a second to look it up. I'm not sure if.
I can answer that, actually. There's an undergrounding requirement that applies to all site development plans, and if they can't underground because of physical constraints on the site, then we charge an in-lu fee for the linear footage along the project frontage.
Okay. Other question is, are these being built for sale or for condos for rent? So that's probably to the applicant.
So we're planning to possibly sell one or two, and then the rest, we would keep the rent out.
Okay, and the rents is at market value?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Commissioner Hastings, any questions for staff or the applicant?
I was interested in how the windows are laid out. I was not on the commission during the early design review. So the end units have windows on the ends as well as in the front, but the central ones just have the clear-story windows on the third floor, as well as the front.
That's correct.
Okay. Not dark?
Well, the windows are gonna be facing the south.
Right.
Really, they're gonna be getting really good light most of the day, at least for those interior units.
I was a little concerned about the heat. Sometimes south, and it's got a slight western tip to it, that that could be pretty warm, too, unless they've got some kind of fancy glass.
The project architect might want to chime in. Kyron, if you, if, I don't know if you want to unmute.
Hey, there's Charlie.
Okay, so let's look, my video started. Yeah, we'll probably use some type of high-performance glass and model that, you know, we're gonna meet, obviously, Title twenty-four. We're actually gonna try to exceed the Title twenty-four requirements for fenestration, but, yeah, on the south side, we're gonna, south and west side, we'll take that into consideration, make sure we get good glass. Because, yeah, obviously, the owners are gonna keep a couple of the properties long-term, so lifecycle costs are gonna be important to them. So upfront, maybe spend a little bit more on some high-performance glass, makes a lot of sense. Over.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
They do have a lot of skylights in those upper units, so that's gonna flood those upper-floor living spaces as well. So that's one of the things that the architect has done to ensure the better quality of light within those units.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Garrettson, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just one question. Chris, you showed the overhead picture of this. As it exists now, it looks like there are two parking spots on Palo Vista that are gonna be lost for this development. So we're, because of the driveway. Is that correct?
There is street parking on both sides of the street. The project entrance will change the setup at this project frontage for where that street parking is gonna be able to locate.
So there will be one parking spot lost from the street for the neighborhood?
Can we go back to the aerial, perhaps, or? Hang on one minute, I'll put the.
Back to the existing.
PowerPoint back up. Just to speak generally, you would generally need about sixteen to twenty feet for a street parking space, and the project entrance would accommodate, takes that much space. So the project entrance, where there's currently a driveway along the northern portion of the site, the new entrance would be on the south. And there would be parking where there currently isn't, I guess, on the northern portion. Based on the aerial, that could be two spaces there possibly that would be affected of the street parking.
Okay, the only question I have. Thank you. Commissioner Looney, any questions for staff or the applicant?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Aguar, questions?
Yeah, so I wasn't here for the early design review, but my question has to do with, I guess, the driveway turnaround and that. It sounds like it was addressed, but how wide is that driveway gonna be? And how exactly was that addressed? It says something about there was a model setup, or is there something in our report?
The commission discussed that at the early design review meeting, and an attorney exhibit was included with the drawings. It would be with the color elevations that were provided. There was a black and white diagram.
Okay, I'll take a look at it then. I guess I didn't see that. I mean, what about, I guess, my big, my question really is, how's a fire truck gonna get in and out of that place? An ambulance?
The fire department has reviewed the plans and approved, given conditions of approval. I think at that depth, I'm not sure, depending on when the location of the fire, that the truck would enter the site, it would probably remain on the street.
Okay. I guess the ambulance would too, then, right?
I probably wouldn't be the expert to speak on that, but I imagine an ambulance.
I mean, the fire department reviewed it, and they okayed it. I know they're very rigorous in their reviews, so.
I spoke to the fire marshal about this project, actually, and he said that, yeah, it would be a sprinkled unit, one, but number two, they would likely fight it from the street, just based on its proximity and how the site's designed. And if they had to pull a smaller vehicle into the property, they could in the existing driveway, but not likely a huge fire truck if there was a major fire.
Okay, I will, I will note that for future projects then as well. Thank you. That's good to hear.
Hey, Chris, this is Kyron. Can I address that, also that comment to the commissioner as well? If you look on the site plan, we do show the fire lane all the way back to one hundred fifty feet. They did review that. The vertical clearances are maintained as well for the envelope, so they could actually bring all their firefighting equipment into the driveway, all the way down the fire lane. And that is, that is denoted on the plan there. So, yeah, and they did, they reviewed it quite a bit. We had quite a few conversations with them about that. Over.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
Alright, very good. This is a public hearing. Ms. Chow, Mr. Conley, do we have anyone wishing to speak? If you are here to speak on this item, would you let Mr. Conley or Ms. Chow know by using the raised hand symbol icon on the screen and let them know? We have anyone?
Seeing no speakers, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, then I will close the public hearing and open it up to commissioners' discussion. Commissioner Kramer, any, any comments or?
No, I think it's, this condominium complex is a good fit for the area. And I like the way they set it up, and I like the butterfly roofs. It's, it's very different, but yet it goes in tune with what's happening with Paseo Santa Fe Phase Two, so I like it very much.
Very good. Commissioner Hastings, comments?
I also like it, and I, I think this early design review just really smooths things out for us. Makes it a lot easier, so I'm all for it. Thanks.
Alright, Commissioner Grimm.
I'm, I'm happy with the project. I had a concern about height initially because it's, it's gonna be, gonna be visible, but I think in our pre-meeting, staff answered that question by, you know, basically just indicating that that area had been changed to facilitate, you know, higher density, so that makes sense.
Alright. Commissioner Garrettson?
Yeah, I like this project on a number of levels. One, it's close to the Sprinter. Two, it's gonna be right across the street from the new park. It's gonna be a block away from the bike trail that's gonna go through there, and close to shopping. And I, I like what they've done with this project, especially the balconies on the upper floors and the fact that people can kind of get away from, you know, what's happening day to day. So I, I like the project a lot.
Very good. Commissioner Looney, any comments?
No comments, thank you.
Alright. And Commissioner Aguar, any comments on?
No, I just, I think it's a good project. I just, I guess, wanna echo what Commissioner Garrettson said. The proximity to the Sprinter, to the freeway, to one of our main roads. And I think this is gonna be a great improvement for that neighborhood, and hopefully a nice spark to that neighborhood as well, so very much in support.
I, I agree. As far as the spark, I think this, they're somewhat pioneering with a new project in this area, and something that we'd like to see up and down Palo Vista. So I know in one of our hearings on the general plan and downtown specific plan amendments, a couple approached me after the hearing and said that they were waiting to see what was going to happen on the street. So I, I think there are other people that are watching closely that's going on, and this will be a good step forward. So it sounds like we are ready for a motion. If, if you're ready to approve, someone will make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Aguar?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the site development plan. One seven-nine, one-two-two, twenty-four, zero-zero, at one eighty-two, one eighty-four Palo Vista Drive.
Alright, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Commissioner Kramer, was that Commissioner Kramer or Commissioner Hastings?
Hastings.
Hastings.
Commissioner Hastings, second the motion. Ms. Chow, would you call the role, please?
Sure. Chairman Rossler, your vote, please?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilera?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Very good. Congratulations to the applicant and to his, to their team. We're looking forward to this being, like we said, a first step for that neighborhood, so thanks for pioneering. So, and best wishes for your success, so.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, the second item on our agenda is for discussion. It is not a public hearing. And it is the sixth cycle of the Housing Element Update. Ms. Chow, is the staff report yours?
Yes, indeed.
Alright.
Alright. Good evening, Chairman Rossler, planning commissioners. I'm Patty Chow, the city planner and deputy director in Community Development Department. Pleased to be here this evening, along with the other team members of the Housing Element Update, to be here tonight to present this discussion item before you and to get your input. Next slide, please. So the, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to get direction from the planning commission on the Housing Element Update, the draft element, to receive public input as part of the process, as it is an important component of the Housing Element Update. We actually took the first discussion before the city council took place on November the tenth, two thousand and twenty. And this is the second meeting tonight, is the second discussion opportunity meeting before the planning commission, and also inviting the public to provide input. So tonight, I'll be covering the RENA allocation to Vista, and also here, obviously, to receive public comments. We did a mailing and e-blast to close to fifty agencies, organizations, and community stakeholders, as well as we posted the draft Housing Element on our website. We did a media release, also reached out via social media, via Twitter, Facebook, and Nextdoor, with the fact that our draft Housing Element is available and for public comment. I'd like to actually take the time right now to introduce our Housing Element team, which is comprised, we have Michael Russler, he's our principal planner. We have Brenna Weatherby from RingCon Consultants, and we also have Veronica Tam with VTA Veronica Tam Associates. Veronica helped us last time with our fifth cycle, and so we're pretty lucky to have both Veronica and Brenna as part of our team. And obviously, John Conley, our director of Community Development Engineering. So we're all together in this effort, working on this Housing Element Update. Next slide, please. So basically, the Housing Element is one of the required seven state mandated elements in our general plan. And with the main purposes as listed on this slide is basically providing an assessment of what the both current and future housing needs in our community, to actually be able to identify where the, what are the constraints and the opportunities for meeting the housing needs, and providing a strategy that will help establish housing goals, our policies, and programs within the next cycle, which is two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-nine, in the next eight years. The Housing Element must be reviewed by the State Department of Housing and Community Development for compliance with state law. Next slide. So the main components of the Housing Element is, as shown on this slide, starts with the community profile. So we talk about demographics, housing stock characteristics in the community, and also we go into housing constraints as to what the market is, in terms of housing constraints from a market standpoint. Also, from a governmental and environmental standpoint, what those constraints might be that we need to overcome in order to meet our housing needs. The Housing Element also goes into resources in terms of meeting our RENA requirements for future housing needs. We've identified our downtown specific planning area, our districts, as being able to help us meet the majority of the needs in the lower-income categories. And also part of the Housing Element, last but not least. And also part of the housing element, last but not least, is a housing plan, which is actually going to list all the actions, objectives to address housing needs. Also goes into details of the variety of housing programs that will be implemented as part of the housing element to help us meet the needs. And next slide, please. So in terms of numbers, when looking back at two thousand thirteen, two thousand twenty one, the fifth cycle, our Rena allocation by income is as shown here for a total of one thousand three hundred and seventy four units, spread above amongst the very low, low, moderate and above moderate categories. Now for the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty nine six cycle, we were allocated HCD through Sandag for the, all the jurisdictions in the county, including the county of San Diego, I should say, total of nineteen jurisdictions, including the county. And for us Vista, we got out of that total number, two thousand five hundred and sixty one. And spread amongst the very low, low, moderate, above moderate. Just like to call and point out that the fact in the above moderate category, that was an exponential increase as far as what it was in the last cycle from five thirty to one thousand three hundred and fifty six. And the reason for that, or the, one of the reasons for that is what we call the impaction correction, meaning that when we look at the city's numbers in terms of how we're doing in terms of amount of very low and low income compared to the county's average, we actually have higher than what the county is. So therefore we get a lower number on the very low and low and a higher number on the above moderate. And that's basically to provide a more equitable distribution throughout the region, throughout the county, so that there's no over concentration of very low or low in any one community. So that's why it provides a more even distribution throughout. And that's the, hence the, the number growing exponentially there to one thousand three hundred and fifty six. Next slide, please. Now this slide has a lot of numbers, I realize that. So I'm going to try to kind of just stay with me on the numbers as I describe it to you, what's happening here on this chart. The Rena allocation is at the top row, which is the two thousand five hundred and sixty one total allocated to Vista for this six cycle. And as you'd see, the top row, it has very low, five hundred and fifteen, low, three hundred and twenty one units, moderate at three hundred and sixty nine and above moderate, one thousand three hundred and fifty six. So what we do from that point is start deducting out of these particular Rena allocation numbers, the amounts of units that we can produce based on, for instance, the first category, there is the pending projects, which is basically pending approved projects, not yet built or under construction that have, that are in the pipeline, I should say, as of June thirtieth of this year, two thousand and twenty. And out of those, compiling all of these projects, we have about five hundred and thirty two units, which are spread among the moderate and the above moderate category as shown on this slide. So then what we do is, instance, in the moderate category, we take three sixty nine minus three eighty. That gives us a negative eleven, as you see there, the one thousand three fifty six minus one fifty two equals the twelve oh four. And so we do the same exercise as we kind of account for the categories of units that we can produce. The next one will be the ADU units, which is four hundred and eighty. And how we arrive that that is a forecast based on how many ADUs we've received in the first six months of this year, which was about sixty submittals for ADU units. So we forecast that number times an eight-year period and basically you get four hundred and eighty units. And why we put it in the above moderate is because by looking at Craigslist, Zillow, et cetera, for ADU units, the rents are actually coming in at the above moderate category rent. So that's why they're in that category. Then we do the same exercise for vacant parcels, how many units can be produced out of those for the different income categories? And also for the underutilized parcels in the downtown specific planning area. And at the end of the day, or at the bottom where you see total units provided, that's how many units we're actually producing out of these, all these yellow rows or categories that we, where we can produce units. And then comparing to the Rena allocation numbers, which is the blue colored row, we have a remaining Rena, which if you notice at the bottom, which is like the salmon colored, the bottom row, you have a hundred and twenty two for very low, a hundred and eighty seven for low and two oh six for moderate, meaning that we have more than what actually Rena has been allocated to us in those particular categories. So what we have in fact is a little buffer to give us a little more cushion in case we need to have additional needs for moving units around in the case of a project site that gets developed at above moderate. And now we need to find another site to compensate for that. We have a little buffer to work with. So that's the good news. But you will see that there is a negative one eighty seven, the above moderate, which means that we're actually short on that category. But no worries there because we can actually meet that negative or the deficiency of one eighty seven by the overage that's in the above, I'm sorry, in the moderate and the low income category. So we're still looking pretty good. And what this all means at the end of the day is that we have in our books in terms of zoning and general plan designation, what is needed in order to meet the Rena allocation. So the good news is that we don't have to do general plan amendments or rezones in order to accommodate the Rena allocation. So we're doing pretty good on that. So I just wanted to point that out. And also to keep in mind that this is all planning for, as HCD requires us to identify sites to meet the Rena allocation. But it's not a requirement that these units are all built within the eight-year cycle period. So I just wanted to make that clear as far as what the goal of this is. And, and obviously our goal is to attain these, but again, the expectations that we have to show that we have the proper location, zoning and land use to accommodate the Rena. Next slide, please. So this map shows the vacant sites throughout the city that we accounted for, helping to meet our Rena numbers. And as you can see, it's spread throughout the city, mostly on the northern part, north of the seventy eight. But nonetheless, throughout our community, throughout our city, the vacant infill site opportu- opportunities there are in order to meet the Rena number. Next slide. And this map shows actually the vacant underutilized sites within our downtown specific planning area, which is actually being looked at to help us meet the majority of our very low or lower income, I should say, income units under the Rena allocation with the yellow areas as the underutilized parcels, non-vacant and as well as the green parcels that are vacant. So the majority being underutilized, meaning that they're kind of ripe in the regard that there is the, the, the actual value of the improvements is less than the actual value of the land. So therefore there, we put them in that category as being underutilized, non-vacant parcels. Next slide, please. And this one has actually a map of what's shown is the planned and approved pending projects, as I mentioned earlier, as of June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty, the projects that are currently in the pipeline, they're not in construction right now, but they're in the pipeline, which means that we can account for these. It's about what I said before, five hundred and thirty two units that we can count because the expectation is that these units will actually be built within the eight-year cycle. And that's why we can actually benefit from taking them into accounting consideration as meeting our Rena allocation number. Next slide. So again, as I mentioned before, as a result of this exercise and, and showing where we can meet our Rena allocation numbers, again, there's no need for general plan amendments or rezones being necessary in order to accommodate the Rena allocation for the six-cycle housing element, which is great news for the city, because obviously that takes away a lot of the, the concerns and fears associated with the fact that things are going to change drastically and that's not the case. So we currently have in the books what's necessary again to accommodate Rena. Next slide. And right now I'm going to turn it over to Michael Russler and he's going to start, talk to us about the survey results that we put out there as part of the effort for public participation as part of the housing element update effort. So Michael, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. As part of the community outreach component of the housing element update, staff posted an online survey on the city's website from September twenty first to October nineteenth. During that period of time, we received eighty-five responses in regards to the survey. Keep in mind, the survey was provided in both English as well as in Spanish. Information gathered in that survey included home ownership expenses, monthly rent prices, housing type programs the city should focus on, as well as best and preferred locations for new housing. Here are some of the results of the survey and the information that was collected in regards to programs and activities. The number one response that was provided was provide incentives for developments that include low income and affordable housing units. A second response was promote fair housing services to address fraud and discrimination. And the third most popular response was focus efforts on rehabilitation of existing housing. In regards to best location for housing, the number one response was on lots that are underutilized. Second most popular response was on vacant land that is zoned for housing developments, but not yet developed. And the third most popular response was near commercial locations, basically live-work neighborhoods. In regards to priority approaches and in terms of approaches and priorities for housing, the number one response that was provided was new housing should be located where it has least impact on traffic. The second most popular response was concentrate new housing in smart growth areas where transit shops and services are already provided. And the third most popular response was to blend new housing in with the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. Next slide. The overall objectives for this housing element update include provide adequate planning to accommodate housing needs for all socioeconomic segments of our community. Assist in the development of affordable housing to lower and moderate income households within the city. And promote, or excuse me, remove governmental barriers and constraints to affordable housing development. Preserve and improve existing affordable housing developments within the city, as well as ensure equal housing opportunities for all Vistons. With that, I'd like to hand the presentation back over to Ms. Chow. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. So essentially what we're looking at, we, we started the process several months ago. Again, we had the discussion with the city council November tenth. Tonight, we've included the draft housing element for planning commission's recommendation, consideration, I'm sorry. And also for your input on that, also on our website. And we're going to be having a similar discussion with the city council and presenting to that, to them the draft housing element in January, early January, hopefully it'll be January the twelfth, that's tentative date right now, so that they can actually give us some feedback on that as well. And as I mentioned before, HCD will be obviously reviewing this. We're hoping that subsequent to the discussion with the city council, we're going to be forwarding this to HCD, to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for their review. It might probably take a couple of months there for them to look at it and, and hopefully with the hopes that at the end of that review, we get preliminary type of a go-ahead thumbs up approval on that. And then we would be coming back to the planning commission and the city council with the actual public hearing along with the negative declaration, a document prepared for it to meet sequel requirements that Michael's been working on. And we would come back sometime in April and hopefully the, meeting the adoption deadline for the housing element in April, around April or mid-April of two thousand and twenty one. So that's kind of moving fast forward as to what our goal is to get to that point. And I believe the next slide is basically to basically reiterate or summarize that again, no general plan amendments, no rezones necessary. And I, I keep emphasizing this because it's a huge point about the fact that we don't have to go ahead and rethink all of it that we have right now in our general plan. So I think it's a big point or big win for us here in Vista to be able to accommodate the Rena allocation for the six cycle. And obviously, we are seeking direction tonight from the planning commissioners, from members of the public that are listening and, and attending this meeting tonight to receive your comments on the information that's been shared as part of the discussion, on our draft element that's been posted on our website. So we're definitely here to get the input from you guys. And that should pretty much summarize what I have and we're opening up for questions. Next slide, please. For any comments, questions, and one more click and there you have it. Questions, comments that you might have, suggestions on the draft housing element and we're all yours. And hopefully we can answer questions that you may have too as well. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. How do you want to deal with the public input tonight? Would you, do we want to go through the commissioners first and then open it up to the public like we would do in a public hearing? Or, or do we open it up to the public first?
I, I think it's, I mean, it's up to you, Chair. I, I think it's fine if you want to go ahead and start giving us feedback. I see that there's three individuals that are listed as attendees here tonight. They might be here, Danielle, Lisa Turner, Operation Hope in North County. So if you want to go ahead and, it's up to you, Chair. I'll, I'll leave it up to you if you want to listen to them first.
Let's go ahead and hear from the members of the public that have showed up. So they might get on with their, their evening if they need to, if that's all right with the rest of the commissioners. All right. Who's first, Ms. Chow?
So I have Danielle. I'm just going to ask you to unmute if you're here. Just, I know you mentioned that you're here from Legal Aid, I believe. I don't know if you had any information or you wanted to share any information on this housing element or provide any comments, I should say.
No, I don't have any comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. And we have Lisa Turner. I'm going to unmute yourself here if you have any comments on the housing element tonight.
Uh, thank you. I'm Lisa Turner with Palomar Family Counseling Service. I just wanted to say thank you, Patsy, for your work and for the committee's work on this plan. It looks amazing. Palomar Family Counseling Service certainly serves a number of, a, a, a large number of individuals that will be impacted by this. So thank you very much for your, for your hard work.
Sure, welcome. And thanks for participating tonight. And I also have Operation Hope North County and I see your raised hand, so go ahead.
Hi, this is Cindy Taylor from Operation Hope North County. And I also want to say thank you for considering all of the socioeconomic classes that we have to consider. Certainly, as our families work to get out of homelessness, having affordable housing is so important. So thank you for considering it as, as you make the long-term plan.
Great. Thanks for participating. All right, those are the folks that we have here tonight. Chairman Russler, so turning back to you.
All right, very good. Mr. Kramer, any comments on the, on the housing element?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I do. Patsy and your team, I don't know how you did this in such a short period of time. It looks like eight years worth of work to get where you, you've got. I personally thought it was a fascinating read. I gleaned so much, especially in the areas where you're, where you compare Vista with the other cities and to see where we've fallen and how, or changed, not fallen, how we've changed and the areas. So you can actually see some trending going on. So I, I, I thought it was fascinating, but I really am impressed that there are no rezones that are going to be required because that, from my history on the planning commission, seems to be what upsets the public more often than not is us having to go back to change the general plan to rezone something. So I, I only have positive words for you and your team. It looks wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words. We appreciate it. And then we got Brenna Weatherby, we got Veronica Tan and Michael and John. And so it's all thanks to the team effort. Appreciate the comments.
Commissioner Hastings, comments on the housing element? Draft?
Yes. Like Commissioner Kramer, I just was really impressed with the, the content and the quality. As an old bureaucrat, I know how hard it is to write things clearly. And this was so understandable. Even, even with my bureaucratic goggles on. So, and I loved all the data. It, it was fascinating. I liked the emphasis on making sure, as the Operation Hope person said, that all parts of society are being addressed and that there seems to be a particular emphasis on the, the lower income, trying to get them to have decent housing. One thing that struck me was when, there's a part that talks about people's incomes and try to translate that into what they can afford for a house. And I felt like it kind of left with the sense that, well, you can't really afford one. You know, you can't, you can't live here. You know, you can't, you can't live here. So that obviously is something that you'll be addressing and trying to make that not be reality anymore, as mu- as much as you can. Another little question that came up for me was, how do you get developers to look at those underutilized sites and say, oh, I have a brilliant idea for that, or even just a, a nice idea? So.
Yeah, that, it's a, it's a good question because obviously we don't have crystal balls here as much as we would like to um, in enticing. I think actually the answer to that would be the fact that when we have projects that are actually real and happening here at the city right now, much like the, the projects that we've seen recently, Paseo Artist Village, uh, the Terrace Lofts, the Grove, uh, several projects that were in the pipeline or being built right now. It's proof, you know, on their own of what the city is doing right now and the efforts that are being uh, generated throughout the city. Um, and, and showing it to the development community that here we are, you know, and hopefully enticing folks to come to Paseo Center Fair and all the improvements that are being done throughout the city uh, to actually encourage development um, in those particular places that we identified. And we've also been talking a lot about um, how to recognize or maintain a database of the inventory of the sites that we have identified, so that people are aware of where these places are, um, rather than guessing and, you know, feeling like, wow, we have to, you know, ask staff every single time, is this a good site? Is this a good site? Can we do it here? Would you support us here? And I think aside from the fact that we identified the zoning and the general plan, which is good for now, um, if we have these resources in place, like a map of resources or database, um, I think it will provide even more information to the community so that it, it becomes like a win-win for all of us to be aware of where the sites are that can help us meet the arena allocation numbers. So hopefully that helps address the, your question, Commissioner Hastings.
Yes, thank you, and um, good luck with that. I'm looking forward to watching all this happen.
Yeah, for sure.
That's all, that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Grimm, any comments on the house, draft housing element? You gotta unmute?
Am I coming through now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Uh, yeah, I have a comment and uh, and probably a question for the consultant. I, the comment I would just uh, kinda uh, reemphasized what Commissioner Kramer and Commissioner Hastings said. I thought it was, you know, I've looked at, as you can imagine, I've looked at a lot of these documents over the years, and I just, I just thought it was so well, well-written and so concise, and if I was somebody at HCD, I'd be very happy to read this document rather than some of the others probably coming through. But um, the question, um, there's, there's kind of a couple of questions, and I think it'd be for um, for Veronica. And it has to do with uh, uh, new ways to try to get additional housing, and I don't know. Uh, I've always kinda looked at SROs and thought, I, I wonder why there aren't more of them. So, and there's, you know, there are some issues with SROs. Uh, so maybe she could, you know, address that a little bit. And then the fact that, is anybody, you see a lot of the same solutions come up. I- is there any new thought in the, in the overall housing industry regarding uh, new types or, you know, of, of, of uh, units? For example, perhaps smaller, smaller units. There's a big emphasis in our society right now on small units. And is anything being done in that area to help provide more additional housing? And then finally, again, for the consultant would be, um, has the state considered, um, and I know it's kind of a sticky wicket, but has the state considered any exemption of environmental some, and I'll give an example, some environmental standards that might actually help reduce the cost uh, for, for just for, perhaps for low and very low uh, units, for example. The um, uh, stormwater requirements require a lot of additional cost to developers. Is there any any thought about reducing some of those, uh, some of those standards on low and very low income, uh, new construction? Anyway, that's a bunch of questions kinda stuffed together, but I'd be happy if uh, if um, our consultant could address that a little bit.
Alright, I think you requested Veronica. I'll let Veronica and Brenna chime in on the SROs questions as far as what they are seeing from their angles, cuz they work with uh, several other jurisdictions, so I'm sure they can probably provide some feedback on that one. So Veronica, Brenna.
Um, this is Veronica here. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, SROs is an interesting um, housing unit type, and I think the type of how SROs today, there, there is a, a legal definition in the Health and Safety Code, which kind of seems to align with more the traditional uh, concept of SROs. You're not required to permit, li- well, you're not required to specifically say something is like, uh, in, you know, zoning code is SRO, um, you uh, permit it, but, but certainly the state encourages you to permit a variety of housing types, including SROs. Most communities, when they look at SROs today, are actually more um, more closer to efficiency units than SROs, and, and they're permitted as a residential use in, in, as a high-density residential use in multifamily zones. Some of them do permit that in commercial zones. I was just talking to the city of Simi Valley. They just permitted a, a um, uh, an SRO project that's over a hundred units, and, and it's nice SROs. Like, they're not, like, they're, they're just smaller units that anybody can live in, and then they, they, they don't have all the whistles and bells and the nice kitchens and all that, but it's an affordable housing costs that are probably um, um, appropriate for students, for single in um, um, young professionals, working people. And, and so when you look at SLO, I think the important thing is to think about it as smaller than a typical apartment unit, but it doesn't necessarily have to fit the traditional concept of an SL that you see um, as, you know, transitional housing for uh, for your really low-income people, and it could actually be um, for higher income too. I've seen um, and, and also in Simi Valley, there was a developer, ultimately they didn't do it, um, but it was uh, a senior SLO that um, uh, intended to be like two seniors sharing their, their, a common bath and kitchen, but has individual living unit. Um, the city of Costa Mesa converted three uh, motels into senior SROs. Um, and, and, and they're, and they're just really regular housing. It's just smaller units. I think you can, you can consider it that way if you want to um, think about it that way and, and don't have to to, to keep it in the traditional format of SROs. But there is no specific requirement as to how you wanna do it, and you have to do it.
The general public, can somebody explain SROs?
Thank you.
Yes, uh, single-room occupancy. So in fact, as um, Veronica was talking about some examples there, in our code in the C2 zone, uh, SROs or single-room occupancy is actually allowed by right. So just wanted to point that out, which means that it'll be allowed in the C2 zone, which is a commercial zone, and then C3 because it, we have the pyramid effect of the zoning, how it's allowed in our code. Uh, but we do have provisions currently in our code for it, but.
So it's.
Explain that more, please.
One person.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't.
It's a room for one person.
Like a dormitory?
No, there isn't common areas.
Yeah, it could be like.
Like a studio.
Um, but it, it doesn't necessarily have to be. Um, like I mentioned before, and now, a, a lot of the um, SROs that are being proposed, they really, um, they're really probably meeting closer the, the uh, standard of an efficiency unit. It has a kitchenette, has its own bathroom, um, and it's just a small unit. Um, the city of Corona also have um, a couple of developers um, that propose for it, and it's for working that, yeah, singles and students.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Did Charlie's questions all get answered?
Well, I was gonna say I could chime in on the environmental question.
Great, thank you. Go for it.
There really isn't anything right now, unfortunately, that the state is doing to try and, and reduce some of the development costs associated with some of these things. Um, they're, they're kinda throwing that back on the jurisdictions in some cases. Um, in addition to SROs, ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units, are also being heavily promoted now. Um, and so we're seeing some jurisdictions that reduce the costs associated with these. Some are providing set plans that people can take and build, which save them money uh, hiring an architect, um, and we're seeing some even cut the permitting costs that are associated with them. So those are some ways that we're seeing that the costs can be reduced, but ultimately that's left up to the jurisdiction. It's not regulated by the state as to what the fees are for those grants.
But is anybody pushing back on the state a little bit to say, hey, maybe there are some, some things that you guys could do as well, instead of just, y- you're absolutely right, it's usually pushed down to the jurisdiction.
Yeah, I think. Charlie, we are not pushing back on the state because we don't wanna get in any trouble.
You want your housing element.
We're gonna leave that up to the big cities that have lots of legal budgets to play with, but uh, we're really riding on the coattails of some of the larger jurisdictions that are proposing some of those changes, and, and the league and some of the environmental groups, and there is some push to probably uh, provide some incentives for affordable projects in the future, in the way of maybe some SEQA exemptions, and those are being looked at. But as far as stormwater regs and all the other environmental protection requirements that have come into play in the last few years, we've really honestly only seen those get worse, and that's the direction they're going because the housing advocates and the environmentalists are not on the same page. You know, they wanna increase the environmental protection for all the right reasons, and they wanna reduce the cost of housing for all the right reasons, but those two things don't intersect at all, and they just keep seeming to be going down the same opposite paths. And I haven't seen any discussion or legislation proposed that, you know, brings them more in line at this point.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Garrettson, comments on the housing element draft? Uh, yes, uh, I, I think the general public uh, would be well advised to understand, this is all cities. This is not just Vista. And the second thing I think is important is that our past general plan and so forth was put together, and it's in compliance with this without major trauma on the part of the citizens in their neighborhoods. For instance, uh, fac- recreation facilities, the plans are already in place for that, and because this is, this is roughly a ten percent increase in the number of housing units, and uh, recreation facility, roads, schools, utilities, that's all part of the plan, so there's no, I guess, dramatic net necessity to make major changes in those areas. So I think that shows a lot of uh, forethought on the part of past planners and city councils when they put this together. So I, I like this a lot. I, I agree with the previous speakers. You know, this is uh, was really, really interesting reading. Alright, very good. Commissioner Looney, any comments on the housing element?
It was interesting reading. Um, for staff, I do have a question on page sixty-seven. Um, seven eighty-one pages. And this is um, under mobile homes. And it states that the city has established a mobile home park overlay zone as a means of establishing, maintaining, and protecting mobile home rental parks in its jurisdiction. And then later in the paragraph, it says, "The phase-out plan specifies the timing and manner in which existing mobile home units are to be removed, relocated, and sets forth mitigation to assist lower-income tenants to be displaced as a result of park closure." Patsy, could you give me some history on the process the city went through when the mobile home park there along the creek was um, removed, and those other prod, other condos that were developed?
I can answer that.
Sure.
The one on Monarch, you're, you're speaking on.
Time when we closed the mobile home park and replaced, uh, displaced, uh, we, we had to relocate all of those residents. There were a hundred and fourteen mobile homes, I believe, in the park. The city owned it. When we closed it, we had to pay relocation costs and find new homes for all those hundred and fourteen people. And that's typical of any redevelopment project. At the time, we had to provide relocation assistance for all the residents.
How many mobile home parks are within the city limits right now?
Quite a few.
Ease. I think there's probably maybe a dozen to fifteen, if I'm guessing. Small, yeah, ranging in size from small, you know, like fif- fifteen, twenty units up to like a couple hundred. Um, and we have zoning categories that apply to most of those, those mobile home park overlays, but really the zoning cat, the zoning discussion that's in the housing element points to the fact that if we close the park, there's a process we have to go through to help with those residents, and really the truth is, at this point, we have no intention of closing any of the parks. There's a few we've worked with that really, if we could purchase and, you know, relocate folks and make it, you know, a nicer park or redevelop it, we would, but uh, those opportunities sort of faded away with redevelopment in two thousand and eleven, and we really have limited authority to do that now unless we have a willing seller.
Are most of those lots leased or are they rented? Are any of them purchased or?
It's a real combination. Uh, some of them are single ownership. Uh, some of them are uh, you know, where the single ownership where they're rental spaces, and then some are uh, owned, actually owned spaces. But yeah, it just depends on the timing and the setup. The majority in town are single ownership with a, a rental agreement.
Thanks, John.
Yeah.
That's all that I had, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Aguar, any questions on the housing element draft? You need to unmute.
Yeah, I'm trying. Sorry, um, no, no questions really. I mean, I know this is a, this has been a living document uh, over the years, and of course, Sandag always uh, changes the game a little bit. Um, but uh, I'm really impressed with staff and have been over the years how staff has been able to adjust and anticipate those changes, and I know that a lot of work has been done mostly by staff, of course, but by previous councils and planning commissions. And I, I just think it's a great document in that, I mean, how often in the past have we been able to say that we're all set with our arena numbers the way they are without making any changes? So kudos to staff and uh, uh, job well done. Thank you.
Very good. Um, I have just a couple of comments uh, on, on the element. Uh, I agree with the, the, the rest of the commissioners. It was a fascinating read, uh, a great picture of our city. Uh, I have a better understanding of uh, of what Vista is all about right now. So uh, lots of information and uh, and I, a lot of hard work, I think, went into it. Um, starting on page fifty-eight of one eighty-one, there is a discussion about availability of mortgage and rehabilitation financing. Uh, and that brought a question for probably our consultants. Back in the early two thousands, uh, there was a housing boom going on, and uh, there were lending institutions that were doing interest-only loans and negative amortization loans. And in, when the bubble popped, uh, that created huge problems for several cities uh, where houses, houses were um, being foreclosed on. And there were uh, one jurisdiction that I used to work for, there were blocks of homes that were vacant because uh, people couldn't afford their uh, afford their mortgages. Uh, my question is, does the city have any control over the types of loans that uh, that are out there and, or can we at least identify uh, those types of loans as being a threat to, to the city? Because if people start losing their homes, we've got, uh, we've got multiple problems. So just a question for either of the consultants.
Patsy, you want me to take that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thanks, Veronica.
Yeah, unfortunately, you don't have control over like the lending um, community, which is really like, lenders are, are regulated by the FFIC and their, and, and they are more like a national policies. But what you do have control over, and, and we always recommend that, is that you do um, provide fair housing services. You do so um, um, have a contract. Um, is it with the legal aid? I think it's with legal aid or, or with um, a C, CSA to, to monitor also the, kind of the, these predatory lending. also the kind of these predatory lending activities by lenders. And this is particularly important in the upcoming years. Now, part of the reason why your last arena was smaller than this arena was doing because it was foreclosure and all these kind of activities. We got arena, unfortunately, during the peak of the housing market. But then with the pandemic, with the impacts of COVID-19, the the economic damage that we've seen, is that going to have impacts or rippling effects on on the the housing market, on people's ability to afford mortgage? And are we going to face that type of issues again? We don't know. But that's why it's very important that you you make sure that your fair housing service providers also kind of be the eye for you to watch out that type of predatory lending activities that typically target elderly and minority households.
Okay, but we're providing some protect, protection for them through legal aid. Okay, very good. The commissioners know that I have, I have spoken in the past about the our lack of inclusionary housing requirements. And I would just, I know we can satisfy our arena. I'm a little concerned that it's all within the downtown specific plan except for above moderate. And that's putting all the projects in in one basket, I think. I do, I did like the the map that showed vacancies throughout there, vacant lots throughout the city where there was potential outside the specific plan. But just a comment from me, not really a question, that we may be putting all our eggs in one basket and I'm a little concerned about that. There were, there was one other comment that the that was made in here that about rents on the higher-density units being more affordable. And I remember reading in the paper, I'm still one of those guys that that reads the paper every morning, that the rents at the Ryland were eye-opening, to say the least. And so I I just, it's an assumption they're making that we've got some evidence in town that may not be true. So anyway, just a, just a comment for that. But otherwise, great job, a lot of hard, like I said, a lot of hard work and a lot of information in it. And hopefully, HCD will be very happy with us and and move us on our way. So, good job, guys. Any other comments tonight?
I just have one comment, Mr. Chairman, that's in relation to your concern about putting all our eggs in one basket. And that goes really more to HCD's requirement for what density they will consider for affordable housing. They require that the cities meet at least a minimum density in terms of the zoning that we provide in order to categorize it as affordable to low or very low income. And so what we show is available zoning for very low and very low units is not necessarily where all those low and very low units are going to go. It just meets the zoning criteria that HCD lays out for us. It's more likely that we'll see those units spread out around the community in different projects, depending on where affordable developers want to build and what, you know, incentives or concessions we give them as part of their project.
Okay, all right. Very good. If there are no other comments, that will conclude our discussion on the draft housing element. Once again, congratulations to staff and and our project team for a great document. And we'll go to comments from the commission members. Any commissioners have comments? Seeing none, Mr. Connolly, your report?
Patsy, is there any action we need to take on the housing element or are we done?
No, I think I think we've received all the comments and we appreciate the time from the commission.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I thought there was a vote needed there, my apology.
No, it's okay, it's just a discussion.
So update for the commission. We are not going to have a meeting on January 5th, which should be our next scheduled meeting. So enjoy your holiday, have a little time off. We will likely meet on the 19th for a couple of projects. That'll be our next scheduled meeting. The Paseo Santa Fe project is officially open. We opened traffic in both lanes this last week. We opened the signs or unveiled the Vista signs today, the remodeled sign on the north end and the new sign on the south end, so you can drive neither direction and see the new signs. We also installed the artwork in the third roundabout. So all the artwork's in, it's really cool if you want to go by and see it. The one roundabout in front of Walgreens is unfinished. I think I mentioned to you because we had a right-of-way acquisition issue with them, which we're going to work out. We hope to finish that by December of next year. But otherwise, the project should be completed and fully opened in January with all the landscape finishes and punch list items done. There's also some construction of some projects happening down there. Paseo Artist Village and the Terrace Lofts are both going up and we've been working with those developers. You can go by and see some activity there. And we're still working with a number of property owners on projects that may come forward. So I'm sure you'll see some big changes in that corridor over the next few years. That's all I have, unless Patsy has anything to add.
No, nothing here, thanks, John.
All right, very good. If there's nothing else, then we will stand adjourned to till January 19th. Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. See you guys next year. And I I hope you have, stay stay safe and get vaccinated as soon as you can.
Thank you.
All right.
You, see you then.
Thank you, everyone.